Dave Dassie, yes, okay, okay, he sees me. We're gonna call to order the city council meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And roll call, Lisa.
Jeff Duffey, Tracy Holt, Bill Leclair, Darla Leclair, Tim Patri, Bonnie Shimalunas, Scott Steckmesser, Adam Husky.
Here. Alright, we can skip over number four, cuz everyone is present. And if you're looking at the agenda, we're gonna move number six ahead of number five. Uh, just because I know we got a lot of people that wanna speak on the public hearing, so there may be someone out there that solely just wants to speak on something else. So we'll put them ahead of the game here, so to speak. So we're gonna go to input from the public. Anyone wishing to speak on something that's on this agenda or something they'd like to see on a future agenda that is not related to the storage units, the public hearing of which we will be doing next, please step up to the podium my right, your left, and state your name and address for the record. Input from the public.
I might add too, we have some folks just arriving. It's kinda like church, the open seats at this point are up by the front, but there's a number of them up here. You're welcome to come on up and have a seat. If we're charging, they'd be premium.
Alright, seeing no one is interested in input from the public, we will move on to number five, which is the public hearing. We have a conditional use permit for self-storage units on the property located between the end of 15th Street, just west of Washington Street and the West Twin River, parcel 053-000-076015.03, submitted by Alliance Construction and Design on behalf of Eric Burrows owner. The recommended action tonight will be following the public hearing, a motion to table action on this application pending further city council review of the plan commission's basis for denial, possible conditions that might be attached to a conditional use permit, and city ordinance and state statutory provisions pertaining to conditional uses. Uh, we will note that the plant commission did recommend this for denial at its December 11th meeting in 2023. Um, again, council can come back with anything, but that is the recommended. Uh, Greg, do you wanna add anything before we open this up?
I guess I would just add, this application was a subject of review by the plan commission at two meetings in November and December. Uh, there were some modifications made by Alliance on behalf of the applicant. Uh, came back for the, to the plan commission, but as council president has noted, ultimately, the recommendation of the plan commission uh, was, is for denial for the reasons stated in those December 11 minutes. Uh, I would note also that Olivia Vanderheiden, who is with Alliance Construction and Design, is here this evening representing the applicant and would be available. Um, um, if there are any questions the council wishes to direct or if she wishes to offer any statement during the course of the hearing. Appreciate her being here.
We did get um, some uh, council submissions via the website. Uh, today specifically, we will read those over, uh, just today's and we'll do just today's, just because not all council members may have seen them, uh, because again, they all came in today.
There were four, uh, contact the council emails. One came to our planner, Ms. Rungy, and one came to my office. So six came in today.
And we will just kinda brief, I'm not gonna read them word for word, nor will I tell you who submitted those, but uh, the first one was, uh, I'm writing to follow up our conversation earlier today, which pertained to my views on the proposed development of the property located behind subway and next to senior living apartments in downtown Two Rivers. As both a resident and active business owner in Two Rivers, I am interested in the development and use of local properties. Uh, they understand and respect the property's owner intent to generate revenue. Uh, but they express their reservations about the plan to convert this space into a storage facility. Given the abundance of similar facilities around the present area, coupled with the uptick in business choosing to start or relocate in the downtown district, district. Uh, they believe repurposing this valuable piece of land for storage would not be the most beneficial use. And they strongly urge city council to deny the approval of the proposed project. Uh, there is another one that states they cannot attend the meeting tonight, but they are opposed to the storage units being built on the riverfront. There are many more things the city can put along besides a bunch of ugly buildings. Uh, take a look across the street, uh, with the nice walkway going on. Um, so they strongly, the rest of it's not pertaining to this, uh, so they strongly oppose that. Uh, another one, this piece of property is way too prime development area for storage units. Um, this property is as far off a main street as the Hamilton property. Future developments should not be storage units. Again, I am paraphrasing, these not going word for word. Um, another one, I am unable to attend the public hearing this evening, but I want to express my opposition to the conditional use permit requested for self-storage units. As a resident of Two Rivers and someone who cherishes the natural beauty and potential economic benefits of our city's riverfront areas, I'm deeply concerned about the implications of such a development. Um, furthermore, as a homeowner living in close proximity to the proposed site, I am alarmed by the potential negative impact on property values. Introducing self-storage units in this prime location could potentially diminish the appeal of surrounding properties, leading to a decrease in the market value and undermining the investments made by myself and other homeowners in the area. And another one, um, as a manager and owner of an apartment unit, I'm writing to you in regards to the proposed storage building complex adjacent to your property. Uh, the back edge abuts the property line of the subject property. Because of this, I'm requesting that this project is approved, that the development be required to install sight obscuring landscape and a fence to keep people from driving through our parking lot. Currently, there is nothing in place to prevent vehicles from taking a shortcut through the property or residents reside. As a resident who appreciates the small town, I question the long-term effects and impacts to the community of the placement of dozens of garages and large storage structure, structures along a historic and highly visible riverfront corridor. I struggle to see the positives that would outweigh the negatives with this proposed development. And lastly, I would like to voice my opinion in regards to using prime waterfront property for unsightly storage units. I believe it would be most beneficial to our city to reserve these prime locations for attractive buildings and city services. Uh, those are the submissions that came in again just today. I know council has received many others privately. I know they have spoke to people in person, telephone calls, um, I have the same. Uh, but without any more, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on solely this topic, please step up to the podium my right, your left, state your name and address for the record. We do have a lot of people wishing to uh, speak tonight, so I will put a limit on, and that will be no more than three minutes. And just let me get my clock out here real quick, or Lisa's gonna hand that, that's perfect, even better. Alright, so anyone wishing to speak, hop on up to the podium, go ahead, stage is yours.
Hello, I have a prepared statement. Um, my name is Susan Robitaille. It's spelled R-O-B-I-T-A-I-L-L-E, and I'm speaking on behalf of my family, including my husband Andre and our son Etienne. I'm here tonight to express our concerns about the proposed outdoor storage units on 15th Street. A property in our downtown, on our riverfront, and in plain view of the River House Apartments, the proposed Starbucks property, the upcoming West River Loss Apartments, and any potential development of the El Toro property. The property at 15th Street is a priority development site in our 22, 2022 comprehensive plan, showing as best use as office or retail use on our 20-year land use plan. In that plan, it is stated that we need four to six acres of commercial land to accommodate job growth. And yet, this use would provide no retail, minimal tax revenues, and presumably not a single new job. The, this conditional use would be a waste. It does not, just not move us forward, it actively moves us in the wrong direction by wasting our limited downtown and riverfront property. In Wisconsin's 2017 Act 67, it requires substantial evidence to deny a conditional use permit. So our family, as residents in this community, are asking for two things from the city. One, deny the CUP outright based on the comprehensive plan. If you are unsure if you have substantial evidence to deny the CUP, then delay the approval and require that the city review the underlying evidence that led us to the conclusions in sections five and six of the plan. They will certainly provide the needed information. Require that the city update its zoning and its zoning ordinances to match the comprehensive plan. There is clear evidence that our CUP ordinances were updated after Act 67. Yet, for some reason, no one updated the zoning ordinances to prevent property use that keeps us from achieving the plan. There are some ways to use property without a CUP that are outright shocking. In summary, the introduction of storage units on this property contradicts the essence of what we envisioned for our downtown and waterfront. A lively, engaging space that draws residents and visitors alike, enhancing the quality of life and local economy. Deny this permit based on the data supporting our comprehensive plan and fix our zoning and ordinances so that this never happens again. Thank you for your time and considering how this impacts our community's future.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic and this topic alone for the public hearing? This is the first call. We will have three calls.
My name is Mark Bittner. I'm a resident of 3311 Monroe Street, Two Rivers, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight to stress three things. Number one, I've had a number of people call me and express their discontent about a development by uh, storage units across, so I'm just speaking for those people. Number two, I'm gonna stress and emphasize what an excellent job you did researching the factual reasons why we should deny this development. This is the heart of our city. This is a valuable real estate. It's close to the bridge. We've had developmental plans about the bridge. And I think we should really seriously consider approving this. Third, my personal opinion, you see, obviously I'm against it, but what I would suggest we do is delay, delay, delay. Dig into it more and figure out a way that we can leverage this situation and not simply flip and turn to approval of a building development of this type. The valuable property is worth a lot more than that, and it's the future of our city. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic? Again, this is the first call. Yes, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Gary Stulp. I'm the property owner at 1400 Washington Street, the subway building. And I am against this for a few different reasons. First of all, when I purchased the property over 20 years ago, um, one of the things that I look at is on the map here, the uh, south end of where the uh, storage units are located does not equal up to the lot lines when I had purchased the property originally. I also know in other development that I've looked at on other properties I own, one of the things being looked at is if the development would go through the placement of stor-, uh, groundwater storage or stormwater, you, storage. Uh, I don't see that anywhere in this plan at all. And it just, the buildings are around are retail. This would end up being, it is zoned industrial, but I think that if there is a way that the city could come back and look to work with the owner to try and get everything cleaned up inside there, like they have worked so many years in putting together the program for the Hamilton uh, properties in the past. I think that that would, uh, just to make sure that everything is clean in the property and being able to be built with a different purpose that um, doesn't just cover up a problem that somewhere down the road, it's gonna need to get cleaned up if, if it is a question out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? Again, we're looking at the conditional use permit for the public hearing of the storage units. This is the first call.
My name's Larry Veldray. Um, I do own some storage units and my units are 100% full. And someone had made a comment that we have too many storage units. That's not true. Unlike most people here, I'm not necessarily against this. I can see some of their points of view because it's on the river. But I feel, I don't, I, I came in here late. I don't know what went on the previous meetings. And I wish I could, if someone could tell me why it was suggested for denial by, by the zoning committee. Like right at the beginning, you just said it was suggested to be denied. And why is that?
You want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so it was denied due to stormwater management plan. There was none. Uh, hours of operation and too tightly, too adequate for uh, emergency vehicles to adequately gain access to all parts of it.
Okay, so those are specific reasons, not because it's on the river. That's not why they denied it.
Correct.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, as a land or, you know, I own property and I don't like other people telling me what I need to do with my property. And um, if, if it's a, if there's a better use for this riverfront property, I don't know if the owner tried to sell it and nobody purchased it, then either the city or somebody who thinks a better use would be appropriate, maybe they should buy it and do it. But I just don't like outside interest telling a landowner what they can do and can't do with their property. You know, I know they're doing the right thing by trying to get the conditional use, but I just, as a landowner, I don't like to be told what I can do with my uh, property. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Again, we are in the first call.
Alright, good evening. In this case, oh, I'm David Van Ginkel, and in this case, I am the property owner at 1422 Washington Street. Um, I've been there for 10 years, and in 10 years, if somebody doesn't complain about grass, it's this tall. You know, we have geese nesting out there. You don't even see their heads cuz the grass is so tall. I was never one to complain. I'm very much a freedom and liberty property owner kinda guy myself. Um, but over the last couple of years, the last two summers in a row, it happened two summers in a row, two summers ago. Uh, pickup truck with a boat connected to the back of it, pulled onto the property, was literally back there for about a month. I don't know if he had a generator or running power, but the lights were on in the boat. The guy was living in the boat. Finally, um, Mark Grams, as a matter of fact, we were talking to him, and he talked to the police, boat disappeared. Last summer, boat came back, we called right away, boat disappeared. Um, when I first took my building over, I would go out there about every two years and cut down the trees immediately on the other side of the fence. And I got to the point where, you know, it's just not my job, so I didn't do it. Um, by this last summer, the trees were all the way up into power lines. I know you guys passed a new ordinance on uh, fences. His fence is falling over, torn wide open, and we've contacted him about it, nothing. So about 16 months ago, I sent Mr. Burrows an offer to, actually, I first called Mr. Burrows. I couldn't get, get him, but I got his secretary, and she live on the phone reiterated. And I said, I'd like to make an offer to purchase on your property. He says, go ahead, send me offer, but don't make it insulting. So I sent an offer 20% over the city assessed value and no reply whatsoever. I'm not a millionaire. My plan was to clean it up, keep the grass cut, slips, boardwalk, green space, maybe a little music venue. At least then it would be open for resale, future development. I mean, I thought about all this, but I wanted to do something that would be cool for a little pop-up events and stuff in our city. No reply whatsoever, so there was offer to purchase on the property. Um, so yeah, you know, moving forward, just like everybody else says, we're not making any more riverfront property. I could think of a million things that could go on back there. I'm all about storage units. I rent three of them myself. I think they're, they're great. I think they should be in the township, not the downtown. So there's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic?
My name is Don Boe Pray. Um, I've returned to this area where I kinda grew up, uh, Manitowoc County in the last four years. And I own a, a bed and breakfast tourism business, and um, I have a kayak myself. And I was in a car accident. I can't easily move my kayak. And it'd be nice to have riverfront access to storing that kayak and encouraging other tour, you know, we have two rivers and a lake to take our, you know, um, boats on. And not easy access to do that. Um, I still have to get in the car and get it to the point to get it in there. So if you're gonna do storage units, could there be time spent to work with this business owner on maybe creating a, a nice visual space that maybe people on their kayaks and things could come there and have a picnic there, you know? Um, I don't, I don't hear a lot of people kayaking this area that stay with me anyway. I do see a lot of the cobblestone. I don't know where they put in and things like that. But I think there's ways, we can work with this business owner and build the tourism business as well. I know the third ward area in Milwaukee, um, they had the same problem with industrial um, environmental problems with the property. And they brought ecological um, things that I don't, Susan, do you know more about that? And when my tourists come, they, they wanna learn about the area. They love the area. And we have such a rich heritage here, the fishing heritage on the water. Why wouldn't we do something that, you know, um, showcases that? We really don't have anything per se that does. Um, and drawing, the people that paddle on the water, they like that stuff too. And use it the environment and things. And I talked to Nancy at Woodland Dunes. I talked to Wendy, who used to do the programming at the Maritime Museum, because when I homeschooled, I brought my kids to those programs, as well as the education center at the nuclear power plant. I hate physics and chemistry, but they did such a good job of that education center. Where did all those materials go? I mean, could there be um, education things down there to bring tourism in? And when I brought that with my kids, other parents were like, wow, this is really neat area, you know? Um, so I just think there are things could be thought of, and now that it's brought to our attention and we do see how valuable this is, I think there are people interested in trying to do something about this. And maybe there's a way to work with that business owner um, to make it mutually beneficial. Cuz you know, I'm a homeowner too, and I don't like people telling me what to do with my property either. So I do get that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this? Again, we are Anybody else wishing to speak on this? Again, we are in call one. Okay, we're going to close call one, open up call number two. Again, anyone wishing to solely speak on the conditional use permit for self-storage containers, please step up to the podium. Sure.
My name is Olivia Vanderheiden. Um, as Greg said earlier, I am with Alliance Construction Design. Uh, we are working with the uh, landowner on this development. Um, so the intent for this development, I guess I just want to speak on a couple of things. Um, was to develop and make the property better. You know, as a few people have said, the way it sits currently isn't great. Um, there are some weeds grown up, fencing not in great condition. So the intent is to do something on the property and the owner had been developing storage units in other areas. And they figured they could do the same thing on this property as well. Um, in regards to some of the things that were um, based on the denial for the plan commission, uh, being the space between buildings four and three on the site, you can see on the overhead projector, hours of operation, landscaping and no stormwater management plan. Um, to the best of our knowledge, uh, we provided the information necessary for the conditional use permit approval with the plan commission, um, by working with Elizabeth uh, here at the City of Two Rivers. Um, and uh, landscaping, stormwater management were some, some things that I believe could be further developed in the site plan review process and would be further developed with the approval of the conditional use permit. Uh, we do, or we were working with a civil engineer, Sand Tech Engineering. Um, in regards to issues like stormwater management, we would have a landscaper involved to get those plans um, up to the codes uh, required by the City of Two Rivers. Um, as far as for hours of operation, um, and space between the buildings, you know, there's still things that can be altered on the site. I know some people mentioned, um, you know, picnic areas, green areas. We, I do like those ideas and I think there are, there's room within this development to add things like that. Um, the owner is willing to work with you guys as well as, you know, things like landscaping screens, whatever it might be. We even had a conversation about the possibility of making the, the wall of the building along the waterfront property a different material or possibly doing a mural of some sort, something to make it more appealing. Um, so there is room for flexibility there and I just wanted to make that known. So, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I got a question. Did you guys consider any other, like maybe uh, condominium? Have you considered?
Yes. So um, Jamie Sprudles, who is business development for Alliance, um, he has been here for the plan commission process, was unable to make it tonight. But he has reached out to two developers on the site um, and hasn't gotten any response. And we actually uh, got a lead from Elizabeth here with the city on another developer that was potentially looking at the site. Uh, we reached out to him three times and we haven't heard anything back. So we've tried.
Are you asking these?
That I am unaware of.
Would there be any interest with the developer to swap properties with some other property that the city has that's farther outside of town?
That I am also unaware of, but it is something that I can bring back to our client.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? Again, we are in call number two. We do three calls altogether.
Uh, thank you for your time. My name is John Volk, three fifty, twenty-third Street, Two Rivers. Um, I am against the plan development. I know there has to be a reason for it to be denied, I guess. Other than it's a bad use is not just a good reason. I mean, it's unfortunately, I guess there's, I'll, I'll give blame on both sides. The city has a, um, a comprehensive plan that's showing for the last 12, 13, 14 years now that it's supposed to be a, a business and living the, you know, development. So why hasn't that zoning been changed? You know, and, and in 2022 is updated, both of them, a smart, smart growth area, right? And it's supposed to be potential uses could include mixed commercial residential with waterfront fuse and waterfront access, public waterfront. Access would be desirable. Not great on what the ordinance to say and what, what it can be. But why doesn't this plan show a riverfront walkway? I mean, there's no public use. It's um, you know, how, how could that be part of a, a planned walkway in the future? It's not shown. The buildings aren't even, I don't even know if that's 75 feet away from the river. I mean, there's no room there. Um, it was brought up, the contamination that's supposedly on the site, according to this, has that been addressed in the um, in the plan permit? You know, I, I guess I feel like that should be along with the underground storage because there's a hundred percent impervious area there. So where's that stormwater going to go? Where's that going to be controlled? If they're going to say that they're going to address it, well, that's underground storage. That's really expensive. Where, how is that, how is that available? You know, how are um, storage units going to support that price? Is it, or just be um, poorly constructed? How is that going to be addressed? I think that should for sure be addressed if they're going to come back with another plan. I want a boardwalk or some sort of public access along the riverfront to be addressed with it. Uh, and, and I guess I'm glad you brought it up because my thought is if, if all they're going to do is put up some storage units, which again, I'm not opposed to because I love them. I have when I need it. Have a lot of garbage and I need it. But the city has umpteen lots in the industrial parks that if they want to estimate, uh, you know, a, a a permit for that, absolutely, that's the perfect spot for it. I don't, it, it's not bringing people downtown, the, the, the storage units, at least not for enhancing the downtown. They're going to put their stuff there and leave. Or I guess they want to put a couple of boat storage in. I don't see where that fits. But if they want to do that, those people are going to come in, use their boat and leave. It's not bringing anything to the downtown. It's not enhancing downtown because it's, they're asking for a permit. I think it's just common sense to deny it at this point. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this topic? Again, we are in call number two.
Adam, if I could just-
Yep.
-regard to some of the comments, not to take issue or be a proponent or opponent. Uh, just as to process tip, it's fairly typical for the city when there's a development that includes both a conditional use zoning issue and site and architectural plan approval to deal with the CU first. Uh, recent example would have been, and no, the city didn't go out and seek Starbucks, but there was an example. There's a CU needed for a drive-through, then there's site and architectural plan approval that's more specific. So while the, the, the points made are all valid, please, I do want people to understand. Well, A, this is the city in its regulatory zoning mode. This is not a city proposal, just in case anybody thought that. Um, typically, if, if, if a CU was approved in a case like this, um, stormwater would be a condition. And if it was shown that stormwater, a stormwater management system couldn't be effectively designed, that would mean either the plans have to be changed or it can't be built. Um, landscaping often has come later. Um, landscape, a, a complete landscape plan could be imposed as a condition upfront. There are other things that typically the city looks at as well at the site and architectural plan review stage, including lighting. Wanting to see a gray scale lighting plan and be assured that light won't be cast off the property. So again, not, not speaking to the merits of granting or not granting a conditional use, but I just don't want anyone to leave here uh, thinking that on any conditional use or zoning decision, that's the end of the road. Because for any industrial, commercial or multifamily residential, I think it's four units and more, there's also that added layer of, of site and architectural plan approval by the plan commission. So that, that was meant more to clarify and educate, not to take a position there. Frankly, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. I was talking to our city engineer today and said, geez, where, you know, where do you fit stormwater on there? Does it end up being an underground storm scepter? Or, you know, does some of the space have, the pavement or building space have to be sacrificed for green space? We don't know yet because it has not to date been required that a stormwater plan uh, be submitted. So just to clarify that.
All right, still in call number two. We will close call number two and open up the third and final call for anyone wishing to speak on this topic. Again, solely on this topic, conditional use for these storage units. All right. See no one. We will close the public hearing portion of this and we're going to kick it back to council. Uh, the recommended action is a motion to table. We can do, uh, we can grant it, we can table it, we can deny it. Um, that's all up to us, but we cannot get into discussion amongst ourselves without some kind of a motion on the table.
I'd like to make a-
Okay, a motion from Bill to deny the CU. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Jeff and council discussion. So I have a denial from Bill and Jeff. Looking for council discussion.
I, I would prefer tabling it.
We have a motion on the table right now to-
There's a lot of, you know, like what she was talking about, here's some, some options. And I mean, if we could meet middle of the road, it's worth a shot.
It can come back as well.
If this one gets denied, that they can make changes and, and certainly come back after denial.
I would just interject, if, if there's a vote on the motion to deny, it might be well to include the basis for the denial, whether it's referencing the plan commission's uh, findings as the, as its basis. Uh, perhaps adding to that, as, as was noted um, in some of the plan commission discussion, uh, it's not a use that's in alignment with future uses as identified in the comprehensive plan. Uh, I'm not saying it's not zoned I two, it's zoned, or I one, it's zoned I one. But it, it's not consistent with those. It would be well to cite bases and I'll let the city attorney speak further to that. On, on tabling, I just remind you from parliamentary standpoint, if there's a motion and second to table, that always takes precedence over the motion on the floor. But right now there's not.
I will give you a couple of reasons uh, to deny. Um, again, I'll go off what plan commission said as a member of plan commission as well. Uh, lack of a stormwater management plan, hours of operation. Uh, too tight to adequately allow for emergency vehicles and, and the landscaping plan. But along with that, city ordinance and self-storage prohibit the storage of flammable or hazardous materials or chemicals. Therefore, I don't believe storing boats inside storage units would fit that unless they're draining their fuel after every use, because that would be a storage of a hazardous material. Which in our, in our code does not allow. It also references no noxious fumes, odors, noise or vibrations. That is also for storage units. Um, the definition uh, for a conditional use is a use either public or private, which because of its unique characteristics cannot be properly classified as a permitted use in a particular district or districts. After due consideration, in each case of the impact of such use upon neighboring land and of the public need for the particular use at the particular location, such conditional use may or may not be granted. That is the city ordinance and definition of a conditional use. Therefore, from what I see and the negative impacts that have been talked about by neighboring businesses and the email from a neighboring uh, property would give us the authority to deny that legally. In my opinion, I'm also not a lawyer, but I, that's why we got him. Um, but from what I read and what my understanding of that would be is that what we label for self-storage and what we permit in there is already stated. And our definition of a use, uh, it's a, Two Rivers Ordinance ten dash one dash seven, which has the definitions of it. Um, have that particular definition of a conditional use, which looks like it would give us the authority to grant or not grant uh, based on the impact of neighboring lands and of the public need for a particular use at that particular location. Again, that's my opinion. Jack can correct me and he's going to do that.
Yeah, the legislature in its wisdom has restricted the discretion of local governments in terms of their powers to grant conditional use permits. What Adam indicated is, is correct. That has been the traditional view of conditional use permits and the authority of municipalities with respect to them. What the legislature did with Act seven sixty-seven, which has been mentioned previously by someone here, is change that to the extent that it is now required that to deny an application for a conditional use permit, there must be substantial evidence establishing that it is contrary to um, the intent and purpose of the ordinances. And substantial evidence is required uh, with respect to any conditions imposed on a conditional use. So that puts an additional burden on municipalities. It's, it's frankly something I, I don't agree with and I think is inappropriate. But it is my job to let you folks know what the laws has to say. Now, does that mean that the city is required to grant every application for a conditional use permit? Obviously not. And it can, I think, take into consideration such factors as its comprehensive plan, any plans it has with respect to redevelopment. Those are all factors going towards the intent of the zoning ordinances in general. It can also look to factors such as traffic, safety, uh, landscaping, things of that nature. The, the difference is a law that there must be substantial evidence for anything imposed in that respect. And again, that doesn't completely take away discretion from a municipality, but what the folks in Madison have done is made it tougher for local governments to exercise that discretion. It's requiring them now to back up its decision with substantial evidence, which is defined as facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit. So the, the point is, I've Greg mentioned, making a good record of the reasons for any denial. And that's something I, I think would be a good idea as well. And I think Adam has, has, has made an effort to do that and anyone else who has concerns beyond just personal preferences. It'd be a good idea to, to make the record reflect those as well.
And what Jack said would mirror uh, A, the comprehensive plan, which is uh, evidence of that. Uh, also, we heard from Mr. Van Ginkel, who has substantial evidence with contacting the police department and a neighboring property who has had difficulties with their parking lot uh, tied up against that property as well with other issues already without the, the conditions of more activity on that site. That, again, that's my opinion and I still go back to the on the prohibit of flammable or hazardous materials or chemicals is in our ordinance that's not allowed in storage units altogether. And I know the use from being on plan commission was to store boats and that kind of um, those kind of things inside these storage units, which is already uh, prohibited in our code. Which is, can be another reason for denial based on my understanding. Yep, I did at, at the beginning. That's a big thing. Yes. Tracy.
Oh, to add to your non-storage, if they're bringing those boats in, they can't drain it there either. That, that isn't what, part of the conditional use.
Right.
They're going to have to maintain it with the, and remove the gas and whatever else they have someplace else.
To mention, uh, our mental history of the place is sketchy.
Yes. Anybody else? Jeff?
Uh, I agree with everything you said, Adam. And I think we need to deny this with all the stipulations that were, that you had said. But I still think that as the city, we need to approach him and see if we have any land available to see if the city could acquire that. to see if the city could acquire that. That way we're in our, in our own control of our own destiny with that piece of property. You know, if we have something similar in size where he can say, hey, we'll, we'll trade these pieces of property for you. And now you can still have your income coming from a piece of property and it solves both problems.
And, and I don't like telling property owners what to do. I don't. Um, but obviously we have some of these in place and there are other uses and I know I, I don't know if I talked about it at plan commission or mentioned it to Greg after plan commission, but e- even the thought of having, um, office buildings kind of similar to what we did on, uh, Highway forty-two up the road just across from Krynek Chevrolet is a, is a pretty good example of something that is not a storage unit, but like a storage unit that's kind of built similarly to that. Um, and there's all sorts of those that are popping up nationwide and could be a good use for, for that property as well and probably went to disturb the soils a whole heck of a lot. Um, if that is something that they are concerned about.
Could, I think, whether, whether in the context of it being tabled or a denial, there is that opportunity for more dialogue with, with Mr. Burrows, who is currently the property owner. I would just caution before we get too far out on the city acquiring it. A, there's a long, there's a long history of manufacturing activity on the site. There's nothing of record, as I understand it, with, with DNR on their, uh, Brownfields site as to any contamination of record, and I'm not going to sit here and represent that there is. There were mural plants on the site. Is there, is there anything out there of record? Not to my knowledge. The other thing, of course, is before the city would acquire any property, you'd want a phase one, if a phase one, a phase one environmental site assessment. If a phase one points to a phase two, which is invasive testing, you'd want a phase two. And you sure as heck, the city did it when we acquired the, acquired the Eggers waterfront property. We have an agreement with Thermo Fisher that someday when they get through their environmental dealings with DNR, the city would purchase that for redevelopment. Um, you'd, you'd want to go through the necessary steps to get certification from DNR of the LGU, the Local Governmental Unit exemption under state law. Otherwise that, it'd be foolhardy to acquire property shy of that. And that hasn't been pursued to date. And I know some council members had presented it because I just get a little uncomfortable mixing the city's regulatory role and property acquisition, which is specifically addressed in statutes, but maybe that can, through our city attorney could be properly broached. But Jack, I think you know the concern I'm speaking to there.
I don't think anyone up here is alleging that there is contamination there for sure. I think there's just that in the back of people's mind based on Miro being there. I don't think anyone up here is sitting there saying that there is because we would have no knowledge of that because there has been no environmental done on that property. So I just want to make that clear. People are out there with a misconception that.
Kind of going both ways. There is no record. On the other hand, I sure as heck wouldn't recommend the city acquiring a property without that due diligence. And I, I'm not saying anyone here is suggesting that, but it's not just, hey, let's see if we can get it for the taxpayers because we don't want it to be the gift that keeps on giving if, if there is a problem.
Anybody else? Nope. All right. See, none. Roll call vote, Lisa.
Tracy Coach.
This is for denying?
Correct.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc? Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Schimelounis?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Dalkey?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, motion carries. Um, I would suggest more dialogue with the city. I don't think we're trying to push the boroughs away. I don't think we're trying to push you away. Um, I just think we need better dialogue as to what we can possibly do with that property and hopefully you can get in touch with, uh, Ms. Rungy's office and our city manager, Mr. Buckley, and hopefully work some things out and we certainly invite you back to plan commission meeting. Um, again, we, we do in the end want to work with you. Um, there, there's just some concern with, uh, with the proposed activity there. So, and thank you for being here. All right, that brings us to number seven, which is council communications. Any letters or other communications from citizens that anyone would like to share with the rest of council at this time? Pretty light, huh? Nobody.
It was all pretty much related to this, the public hearing, so.
All right. Nobody else? Jeff?
Oh yeah, I got several.
Okay. You saved the day.
Um, somebody had messaged me and asked me why Lincoln Avenue doesn't get snow wind rolled and removed like it had in the past prior to reconstruction?
Yeah. Well, that was very clearly discussed with city council when the roadway was redesigned and the roadway narrowed. You know, it used to be tra- uh, sorry, parking lanes on both sides and I think four lanes for traffic. So there was, there was room to pile it up in the middle. Uh, with the redesign, it was narrowed to incorporate more green space. Per state and federal requirements on a state highway, we had to add the bike lanes and two traffic lanes. So, um, that, uh, that design makes it tough and it was made crystal clear in discussions at council going in that the intent was not to windrow it after that. Not to say it couldn't be revisited, but given the design, it'd be tough. And, and that was discussed and I know there were, uh, business owners in the area that had concerns or weren't wild about the idea at the time.
Okay, I'll pass that on. Sure.
Um, then I had several complaints about trash cans and recycled bins being broken here over the last month. And I don't know, have, had they contacted the city manager's office or?
They can certainly. We, I know I've had occasion, not, not a lot, but I'd see within the last six months for a couple of calls to our, our contractor, Manitowoc disposal about those concerns, which haven't been typical through the years, I would say. Uh, I, I'd make the first stop Manitowoc disposal, but if, if you don't get satisfaction there, certainly call city manager's office.
Great. I was kind of surprised by that comment because for the most part they do a pretty good job.
Yeah, generally they take pretty good care, but I have heard that from a couple of folks.
Yeah, and it had been several people that had messaged me and told me so. I don't know if it came with the cold weather, the garbage cans were breaking when it was that cold.
A couple of weeks ago, they might've been chattering more. Yep.
Um, let's see, several calls about the downtown storage. Um, somebody had messaged me and then this was in conversation. They were thinking that if you have over five thousand dollars in property taxes a year, you shouldn't pay for your garbage stickers. So that was one of the comments I said that I would bring to comment, or to comments.
Oh, you chair the, you chair the finance committee, Jeff. Have at it.
I'm sorry. I'll field that one another day. Can you repeat that, Jeff? There is a couple that didn't hear that. Sorry.
Um, if your property taxes are over five thousand dollars a year, there's a few residents that believe that you shouldn't have to pay for your garbage stickers because you aren't paying enough in property taxes the way it is. That was just one of the comments that I got.
Could be a free water bill too.
Oh, that'd be nice.
I'm sorry. That was, that was sarcastic. I apologize.
Um, and then another comment I got when I was, oh, talking with people. Um, they would like a push for an open conversation with the city and the school about the problems and the issues at LB Clark, because a lot of the people, a lot of the reasons why our taxes went up are because people are leaving, taking their kids out of the school district and going elsewhere. And they thought that maybe the city would have more of an impact talking with them than people trying to go to school board meetings and, uh, and trying to get anything done that, that way, because they said primarily the problems are LB Clark. So I'm actually glad you're here today. And, um, and with the transparency on things happening there. So I don't know if we had, we, I know we had talked about having.
You know, I can tell you historically, there's been some dialogue, there is dialogue periodically on joint issues between the district and.
I only got several comments on that one.
But from people, my only caution there would be there's a directly elected board of education that has statutory responsibility, just like the council does in your sphere. It, it impacts the community certainly. But I think other than those kind of informal communications, which can happen, obviously there's no statutory role here and I, I, I'd have some concerns about the mixed message because people's primary point of contact should be the elected board of ed and of course administration. So that's, that's my best answer there.
I don't want to put Diane on the spot, but she is here. If she wished to comment, then she can come up to the podium if she wishes, as Jeff continues on with his stuff, but that, that'll be entirely up to her. Not trying to put you in the spot, but being you're here, I don't want you to have to hold anything back that you may be also thinking, so.
That was my last one.
Oh, that's your last one. Okay.
Yeah, I seen Diane here, so I, I saved on twice.
Okay, okay. Can you just step up to, to this way that they can hear you a bit better at, this is Diane Johnson, Superintendent of Public Schools.
Uh, you know, I would say make sure that people are contacting the school board and me in attending school board meetings or sending information and emails to our school board. I think in the last, and I'm just off the cuff, I think we've had four or five total people in the three years I've been here come and make comments at school board meetings. So anybody's welcome to do that. Um, our school board is very open to having conversations, um, with people who might have concerns about anything in our district. So make sure they're contacting us with those.
Now, a question, because I've heard from someone else that you have to sign up ahead of time. Is that correct? You can't, like here, you can just show up? Do you have, someone said that they had to sign. Oh, you sign up at the meeting. Okay, so.
And then you're given the policy and it's, it's very clear what the policy is, so people aren't confused.
So you do not have to write ahead of time? You can just show up, sign your book, similar to, we have a registration on our table?
That is correct.
So that's similar to the same thing. Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else, Jeff?
That's it.
Anyone else? Um, I had a couple, um, again, I've, everyone up here got those with the mini storages. Um, but I also got a couple of people with appreciation for us lifting the parking ban again after being on for a week and a half, two weeks. Uh, I know there are families out there that have quite a few cars and it's really difficult for them to fit them all into the driveways and then in the morning they gotta do a whole bunch of rigamarole to get the right cars out at the right time. So a, a couple of people had expressed appreciation for that. And also on the ice rink, people were very appreciative of the ice rink and, uh, wonderful impact it has on the downtown community. I did hear that as well over the weekend. Jeff?
I do have one more yet. Um, a couple of people had asked me what is happening now with, uh, property on Washington Street, the old, uh, Unimarc.
Oh, Creps, I had that too. I forgot that.
Yes, uh, actually, uh, Elizabeth, uh, Rungy and I met with the folks that own it and have a development agreement with the city last week. I expect we'll have a report back at either the next, the not meeting on the nineteenth or the work session this month. Yeah.
Everybody's happy that it's cleaned up, but they were just wondering what's happening.
And they've run into some additional circumstances with the site, I can say, and it will be on an upcoming agenda.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that up. I had called you on that after I received that. So, yes, thank you. All right, on to eight, uh, reports from boards, commissions, or committees. Anyone have anything they would like to report on from their respective dialogue?
Um, for the EAB, we have, uh, three more, uh, winter educational series, um, presentations that are going to be coming up. The next one is going to be on stormwater. And I think that people really should, uh, get to understand that issue a little bit more. And that will be with our public works director, Matt Hagenleibel and our, um, engineer Scott All, and that's in March. And then, um, we also have one on climate change and it's going to be with the governor's task force, um, member. Um, Mike Peters, he works for WPPI, but he was on this, uh, he was on this, um, task force. So that's going to be pretty good. And then we have recycling and I know that, uh, recycling is going to be in May and I recycling isn't what it used to be. It's like what can they take, what can't they take? Where does it go? Who gets what? Is it actually recycled? You know, so you might, you might want to, um, come and, and learn more about that. Also, uh, we just had a, we just had a, a presentation this past week and we had such a turnout. It was amazing. It was on, it was on like our local ecosystem and how, um, you as homeowners can kind of, you know, what you plant can go along with what should be here. Um, it was really interesting. We must've had a good forty, forty-five people. It was amazing. So we, we found our feet when it comes to these, uh, these presentations. Um, also for the EAB, um, I, the, uh, I don't remember the number of it, but it was, uh, the bill that was started by Andre Jacques and, um, and, um, oh my gosh, thank you. Uh, for the Vegetable Garden Protection Act. Um, it's, it cleared the committee. There's been one, there's been one hearing, there will be more, and so that is still in process. And then for the Main Street, just remember that it is going to be Sweet Street this Saturday. And you can go to sixteen business hosts for sweet treats. And, uh, they are working on their map. Main Street is working on the map, but what, we're doing this in place of a spring wine walk and this is more for, for families. And it was real popular last year, really popular and, uh, a lot of really good things to eat. And the other thing is they've got the great trivia contest coming up on March the eighth. And also, um, we're kicking off our banner art right now with giving out canvases. And, uh, we would, if you would like to participate, we would love to have you, um, you know, do, paint up your canvas and, and submit it. And we have placed for twenty-eight different banners. So we're really reaching out to people this year to, um, to be involved with that and to get your, your art up on our, on Washington Street. So any questions about that, you can contact the Main Street office.
All right, anything else? Anybody else?
From the city on age. Dr. Islandfeld had, did a, a year review from last year and they actually created their own.
I'll insert to the mic please.
And kind of taken, taken from our city logo, they made their own. Kind of neat. If you go on the website for, for, uh, senior center, you should be able to read a lot of cool things on there that they did last year. Monumental. Another thing to mention is about our, uh, Park West on another award for, uh, project design through the state. All right.
And you said that report is online on the senior center website. Okay. So if you're looking for that, that's up on the senior center page on the website for the city of Two Rivers. Anybody else? None? Without further ado, Greg Buckley, your report.
We, we have some special invited guests tonight. We're not pinning badges on them or adding stripes to their shoulder, but they're in fact, uh, guests here from, uh, Omaha-based Tanaska. Uh, Tanaska is a company that has an option to purchase an approximately nine acre site at the Woodland Industrial Park for development of a battery energy storage facility. And a number of folks in the audience were here earlier tonight for a, an informal posted public meeting, uh, public information session on, uh, on their proposal. Those are some of the boards that you see here. Um, we do have, um, I believe Jared Pitts is the spokesperson for the group. I'm going to allow him to introduce his team and Tanaska and the project. Just for a little background, and this will be repeated. This is not up for official council action tonight. This is really an introduction of, of the project to the community. Uh, the matter of a conditional use permit, conditional use zoning permit for the site, which is in the Woodland Industrial Park in the I-one zoning district where private utilities are identified as a conditional use will be up, uh, in front of the plan commission for their recommendation next Monday, the twelfth. I anticipate it will be back to the council and at the meeting of the nineteenth to set a public hearing for March. So more details on that later, but this is a, a very exciting, very interesting proposal. I'm just going to transfer my laptop to the podium over here and, uh, Jared will take it away. We also have listed after the presentation specifically the opportunity for questions and answers from the council. Um, was intended just for that. There will be opportunity, of course, in the future when the council does a public hearing uh, for questions, answers from the general public.
All right. Thank you, Greg. And, uh, good evening, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. My name is Jared Pitts. I'm a director of project development for Tanaska. And I'd also like to quickly, uh, have Tanaska folks in attendance here this night, please stand because I'm joined by a fantastic team here that is in attendance this evening. So thank, thank you all. And, um, yeah, please, you know, feel free to stop by and talk to the team here. But, uh, first, you know, wanted to, uh, thank you for this opportunity tonight to present to you. Also, thank you for allowing us to have an open house here before your meeting this evening. It was, uh, great to meet many of you and many of the members of the public. We really appreciate, um, everyone coming out tonight and for all the great, great questions and great interaction. Right. So tonight I wanted to hit on four key, key topics. One, I wanted to share a little bit about Tanaska. Second, I wanted to describe the benefits of battery projects like this. Third, I'd like to share a little bit more detail around the technology behind this project. And then lastly, provide a project overview. So that's what we'll hit on and then, um, would love some questions at the end, um, if you would like. All right. So about Tanaska, Tanaska is headquartered in Omaha, Nebraska. Tanaska has 35 years of experience in the energy industry and are consistently ranked as one of the largest privately held companies in the United States. We've recently been named one of the U.S. best managed companies by Deloitte and also by the Wall Street Journal. And we've developed over 22,000 megawatts of generation, which represents over $20 billion of investment. And projects that we've developed have consistently been recognized and awarded for safety in the industry. All right. So I want to talk a little bit about the project benefits. First, I want to emphasize that there is a strong need for technologies like batteries that deliver firm dispatchable power. The role of batteries on the system is demonstrated in this energy demand chart on this slide. During times of peak energy generation, such as when power from solar or wind is in abundance, batteries can be charged to capture that excess generation. That's shown in the green, um, area within the chart. And then batteries can then be discharged, can then discharge the stored generation onto the grid during periods of peak demand. And that's shown in the, in the red area. So why batteries now? Um, as, as you know, many markets, including the power markets, are driven by supply and demand. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about what's going on in our industry from a supply and a demand perspective. First, with respect to demand, uh, we continue to see increased electric demand. This is driven by population growth, uh, growth in electric vehicles, um, extreme heat in the summer months, as well as extreme cold in winter months increases electric demand and overall economic development. On the supply side, we continue to see aging transmission infrastructure as well as retiring generating facilities, which reduces supply on the system. And, and lastly, we're seeing increased levels of clean energy, in particular wind and solar, um, which are intermittent energy resources that can, can greatly benefit from battery projects like this. And so we see battery projects like this fulfilling two needs. One, they help step into this supply gap, um, that's being created by increased demand and reduced supply, um, by bringing on reliable, low-cost resources. And secondly, batteries can help, um, integrate additional renewable energy onto the grid by helping mitigate some of the intermittent nature of solar and wind. And these benefits have recently been demonstrated by, um, a real world success story in Texas. And so I wanted to highlight a recent article that came out, uh, based on, um, a recent cold, uh, weather event that hit Texas, uh, earlier this, this year. And the, the article essentially highlights that in Texas, which is one of the leading states and markets in the U.S. in terms of installing battery energy storage projects like this, that batteries provided approximately 1,200 megawatts of backup power that helped prevent cascading blackouts in, in the market. And I also wanted to highlight a quote by Pablo Vegas, who's the CEO of ERCOT. ERCOT is the, um, organization that's responsible for grid reliability in Texas. And he says, quote, "We're seeing batteries growing very rapidly on the electric grid. We're seeing that every year the additions of those resources, and they're making a big difference during the summers as well as the winters." So what is a battery energy storage system? Essentially, it's a system of batteries that's connected to the power grid that charges batteries when there's excess, um, energy on the system and discharges that when power is needed most. This is a picture of a real, um, operating battery facility. And I wanted to point out a few of the key equipment features, uh, shown in this, in this picture. Uh, first off, the, the white infrastructure is the battery enclosures. And I'll talk a little about those a little, in a little bit more detail on a subsequent slide. But that's where the batteries are housed and that's kind of the core technology and equipment behind a battery energy storage facility. Additionally, there's electrical equipment, which is shown, um, within the gray, uh, facilities here. Those are inverters, transformers, and control panels that essentially control the voltage and current that comes in and out of the battery enclosures. Additionally, in the back of this picture, you'll see a substation. So the project will have a substation that allows us to interconnect with the transmission grid. And then lastly, I'd highlight that there's a perimeter fence for security around the project as well as access roads along the perimeter and throughout that allow for the equipment to be easily accessed and, um, available for routine maintenance and inspections. So based on this technology, based on the design, we view battery energy storage projects as very low impact projects. They have a small footprint. They have no emissions. They have minimal visual impacts. There is no traffic during operations and they have minimal sound. This is an example of a battery enclosure, which represents cutting edge technology. Each purpose-built enclosure is approximately 10 feet high, nine feet wide, and approximately 30 feet long, though this can vary based on manufacturer. The enclosure contains battery cells and modules arranged on racks. Those are represented by each kind of gray rectangular, um, module that you see in, in the picture here. And additionally, there are various operational and safety features built into a battery enclosure. We have a battery management system, which will control operations and can automatically shut the system down. There will be monitoring components, which can identify any signs of malfunction. There will be a round-the-clock remote monitoring from operations teams and from the system manufacturer. And there will be an HVAC system that will maintain operating, optimal operating temperature of the system. I'd like to address safety. And first, want to start off with emphasizing that safety is at the forefront of everything that we do, and this is our top priority as a company. Battery energy storage systems are safe when they're properly designed, installed, tested, and maintained. There are over 20,000 battery enclosures like this currently operating safely across the United States. And there have been no injuries to the general public at any U.S. operating battery project. Some of the features that go into our safety for a project like this are, one, the technology that we're using will meet or exceed all national fire safety and electrical codes and standards. In fact, our project is committed to designing our project according to NFPA 855, which is considered the gold standard for designing, constructing, and operating battery projects like this. Additionally, our project will be built with, um, the latest technical, technological advancements, including plans to use lithium iron phosphate, which is known as the safest type of lithium ion technology in the market today. Additionally, our projects will be designed with self-containment. There will be state-of-the-art protection and control features. As I mentioned, we'll have 24/7 monitoring and automatic shutdown should there be any abnormality detected in the system. And lastly, I want to highlight that, um, we are committed to training and, uh, and best practices. In fact, we have already started meeting with, uh, the fire department. And, uh, we are real appreciative for Chief Murak to be here this evening. And we've also met with Assistant Chief Chakes. And we're committed to working with them in a partnership and ensuring that as we advance this project, it's, um, in, in close communication and in close engagement with, with the fire department. All right. With respect to our project overview, and I know Greg touched on a few of these, um, but we are, you know, proud to be working with Greg and Elizabeth on, um, having our battery project located within the city of Two Rivers Industrial Park. Um, as you can see on the map here, the black boundary represents the approximate 10-acre parcel where we would be having our battery enclosures. And then additionally, the project would have a overhead transmission line, which is shown in the yellow dots, which would, um, go down to the Shoto substation, which is where the project will be interconnecting to the transmission grid. Um, our project is 150 megawatts in size. As I mentioned, approximately 10 acres and would be located in the industrially zoned industrial park. Right. From a timeline perspective, I wanted to highlight, uh, a few key aspects of our timeline going forward. Here in the first quarter, um, land use permitting is going to be a very, you know, big focus for our team. And in particular, as Greg mentioned, um, we are, um, going to be seeking a conditional use permit for this project. And so we look forward to having that considered before you here, uh, potentially as early as, as March of this year. And want to emphasize that if this project were to be approved by you, that would then allow us to take additional steps to get a project like this ready for construction. And so if approved, we would then be looking at later this year to do more advanced engineering and permitting for the project. We would, in the fourth quarter of this year, then be looking at making a final technology selection. And then that would allow us to make the preparations to start construction, uh, sometime in the third quarter of next year. And it's an approximate 12-month construction period. So that means we would be looking to have the project operational sometime in 2026. All right. Lastly, I just wanted to summarize some of the local benefits from this project. Uh, this project would represent an approximate $250 million investment in the, in the local economy. We believe this project would continue Two Rivers' tradition of providing reliable power for Wisconsin. The project will increase local property tax revenue. It will create approximately 75 well-paying construction jobs. The project will strengthen existing electrical infrastructure in the area, including grid resiliency and reliability and helping avoid blackouts. Additionally, this project will help maximize the use and integration of renewable resources in the market. And this will provide for new capacity for new businesses, um, and also benefit local residences in terms of the capacity that this brings to the area. And this project would be able to meet approximately peak demand for about 10,000, or 100,000 homes when it's discharging. So want to, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. And I'm happy to take any, any questions that you all may have.
All right. If anyone has questions here on council, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll allow, um, we'll allow for him just, uh, call on you because it's, he's going to be answering them.
Do you have any agreements with our, our electrical supplier, WPPI?
With, with the local electric supplier?
W P.
W PPI. No, the, the project currently does not have any contracts in place with, with Wisconsin Utilities. That will be something that we would be looking to, to put in place over the next year, year and a half, before we would start, start construction. And so we, we are in discussions with various u- utilities throughout Wisconsin, and we continue to see very strong interest in projects like this. We see them coming out with what are called resource plans that kind of show what their future kind of capacity needs and resources will be. And we're continuing to see batteries part of those, those resource needs. Um, but we do not have, have a contract in place as of, as of today.
How long does, um, one of these batteries last? Do you know?
Yeah. So we, we plan for a 20-year project life.
Oh, really? For each battery?
Yeah. So we, yeah, we, we anticipate a 20-year project life. We do anticipate that there will be some degradation that will occur
Right.
a- as the batteries operate. And so there is what will be planned, um, augmentation for our project, where every several years, we plan to come out and add some additional batteries onto the site that will help, um, offset some of that degradation. Um, and so based on the initial batteries that are being installed, as well as that augmentation plan, we anticipate a 20-year life for the project.
I got a couple of questions. I'm going to follow up to Bonnie's though. Uh, so once that 20-year life is over, do you install new batteries or is the project pretty much commenced? Is like the site going to be commenced? Like sometimes we take nuclear plants like we're seeing up in Kewahnee, uh, shut down and is, is that kind of what you mean by the life of the project?
Yeah. I would say the life would be for the kind of the initial, you know, installation that we have, have planned here. Now, 20 years from now, um, it is possible that there could be an opportunity to potentially what we call like repower, where we could, you know, essentially come and, and re, reinstall, you know, the latest batteries in the market to continue, you know, having this be an energy of facility in the market. And I think, you know, we, we definitely would, you know, like to see, you know, potential future opportunities like that. But that's not something that's part of our, I'll call it base case plans. And then in the event that the project, you know, were to not extend beyond 20 years, you know, one of the things that we're committed to in our application is having a decommissioning plan as part of our project. And we are also committed that before we would start construction, we would have, uh, decommissioning s- security that would be put in place so that, um, from the city's perspective, that at the end of a useful life, if we were to not, um, fulfill our obligations, which we intend to, there would be a security set aside to ensure that the, that the site is, is fully decommissioned.
And so a couple of my other questions, and I know I talked to you earlier too, but I just want to let the public know of those questions as well. Do you foresee people actually being on site on kind of a daily basis to do maintenance, to monitor? I know you got the 24/7 monitoring that, that's tied up to your system without anyone having to be there, but whether there be a presence of, of someone or multiple people, uh, looking at this project on somewhat of a daily basis?
Yes. We, we do anticipate that on a very consistent basis, there will be, um, operational staff on, onsite. And, and a big part of that will be just continuing to do routine maintenance and checks to ensure that the system is operating properly.
Yep. So you're not just setting this here and 20 years later coming to, coming to pick it up? It's not going to be like that?
No. It's going to be, yeah, very, very hands-on. And again, we're, we're making a $250 million investment and we want to make sure that we're taking, you know, good care of it and that everything continues to operate, um, you know, well and, and in a safe manner. So there's, there's going to certainly be a lot of, um, team members that are involved to, to ensure that that happens.
And, and two other questions I had yet, and then I know of this one I asked you as well. Each one of those, um, cells or units have a HVAC system to both heat and cool. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then, I mean, we don't expect a lot of noise adjacent with those units when they're operational.
That, that's correct. It would be, the main source of noise would be the HVAC units. It would be very similar to any kind of commercial HVAC system. Uh, the project will also have its substation, which for us is going to be kind of tucked in the back based on our layout. Um, but again, it'll be similar to any, you know, existing operating substation. And our, our team has looked at the noise, the noise ordinance requirements, and we feel very confident that we will be below those in terms of how we're designing this project.
Okay. Then my last one just has to do with the border or wall or fencing, whatever you're going to use. I- is that pretty secure that somebody just can't drive a car up to it, through it? Um, you name it. Is it going to be pretty secure that people just can't access that stuff pretty freely?
Yes, we will have, um, a secure perimeter fence. I think what you'll see in our application, what we're currently proposing would be a, uh, chain leak fence with barbed wire on top. And we also have looked at putting, um, some slating along Woodland Drive to help from an aesthetic perspective. And so I think we, we believe that that's sufficient and is, is in line with how most of these projects are, are built from a security and from a fence perspective, but also want to reiterate that we're committed to working with you and making sure, you know, you feel comfortable with what we're doing from a security perspective on the project.
Perfect. I just wanted the, the community here to hear some of the questions that I had asked you so that, that they can hear the same answers.
Thank you.
Oh? If I could too, just to, to add to that, this will be in front of plan commission. Not, not everything is finalized by any means, but the, the discussions to date, I've got to say, our, our fire personnel, command personnel, uh, were very impressed with the... the discussions that have occurred so far and the commitment because a safety plan, emergency response plan vitally important. Decommissioning, we've already touched on, and that includes not only a decommissioning study with an estimated cost of removing everything and returning the land to productive other uses. But making sure, as as was referenced in the presentation, there's there's appropriate surety for that. So there's there's a bond or an instrument that the city has confidence in that makes sure the bills get paid for that decommissioning. And typically, those decommissioning plans are updated about every five years because market conditions and and costs change. NFPA 855, as I understand, has not yet been adopted by the state of Wisconsin, but we fully anticipate it would be referenced as the gold standard. Again, you hear about National Fire Protection Association. You heard about it last week when council discussed buying a new fire truck that meets specs. That's obviously well-respected national entity that establishes those those criteria. So watch for more of that. The other thing we we've had just, again, just to to share, very preliminary discussion. We don't have in-house expertise in battery energy storage systems on city of Two Rivers staff. So there will likely be the need to engage our own engineering support for both plan review and review of what gets built in the field. And we anticipate addressing that with the developer and and expect that reasonable costs for such could be could be borne by the project. In addition to plan commission, the project will go before the Community Development Authority and BIDC as they enforce or approve any waivers to the covenants out at the industrial park. But Tanaska has been super to work with thus far and have answered our questions to our satisfaction. I'd just, you know, speak to it a little more. We've always taken a lot of pride in the role of this area, and a lot of people who live in Two Rivers have played empowering Wisconsin, working out at the point each nuclear plant. We really miss the Kewanee Nuclear Plant, which that was humming and supplying energy. But between the nuclear plant, the investments in solar, which are significant just to our north. This this fits with the history of a community that's played a big role in Wisconsin's energy past, present and future. So look forward to bringing this back for more discussion and and thank the Tanaska folks and a lot of neighbors from the industrial park and around the park and the community. It wasn't all about mini storage tonight. It was a lot. But I'm glad this was, we were able to see this shared with a large live audience. And this this presentation, we will, in addition to, you can always go look at our meetings online after the fact, but we'll be highlighting this presentation for folks that have a specific interest.
Speaking of fire, I do believe on one of those boards in back, if you were here earlier before our meeting started, it did speak to fire, and it does not require any special fire equipment. It will require special training, of which it sounds like Tanaska is gonna be on the hook for helping our fire department train for that. But it doesn't require any special equipment that the city will have to go and buy should anything happen to this structure or battery area.
And battery storage is a coming thing. It's Wisconsin utility owned, but not too far down the road in Sheboygan. Alliant has gotten local zoning approval for their Edgewater project, 100 megawatts, I think 400 megawatt hours on the site of the soon to be decommissioned Edgewater Coal Plant, still very much in the heart of the community. A lot closer to more residential areas and schools than our Woodland Industrial Park, which is made for industrial, made for utility type uses and at the edge of town. So watch for more on this. And again, thank you to the Tanaska team. I expect if folks from the audience have any further questions, they can be available quietly down the hall outside the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll rev it up and make it quick on the city manager's report. You've heard that before, haven't you?
And everyone's walking out, Greg.
I'm sorry.
Everyone's starting to get ready to leave now, Greg.
They're fleeing for the exits. They're all leaving. Feel free, feel free to leave, or you can be polite and stay here all night. The fun has the fun has only begun. This is the time of the year that I usually present a brief state of the city report to city council. So we'll walk through that real quick, like on on the front sign of our fishing heritage, but a sign of the future, the new steel hulled Susie Q two coming in off the lake.
Can we just have the dial? Okay, yep.
Again, thanks, folks. And no, nobody will be offended if you see fit to have to leave. And Tanaska folks will see some of you at least next Monday at Plan Commission. So on that note, what what are some of the things cities do? Well, they invest in infrastructure that serves all of us. 2023, as highlighted here, we saw some asphalt resurfacing over on Zlatnik Drive and 18th Street near the beach. Our major street reconstruction was Lincoln Street, 17th to 22nd, including all utilities. And we've made some more progress on the new off-street segment of Mariners Trail along East Street. The hope is to complete that this year, tying it into pedestrian and bike improvements on the Washington Street Bridge that are in this year's budget. More on that later. You've heard a lot about it in recent years. You're gonna hear a lot more about it in the future. The the real, very real need as a matter of public health and increasingly public policy from EPA and DNR to get the lead out of our water system. And Two Rivers is an older community, like a lot of older communities. We have still quite a few lead water service laterals out there, presently about 1,500 out of just over 5,000 total services in the city. The little graphic at the left shows how over the past seven years, we've eliminated about 663, exactly 663 lead services. In the current year, we anticipate removing more, both on Roosevelt Avenue, where there are about 50, and 200 at scattered locations around the city using American Rescue Plan Act funds, both city ARPA monies that came from the feds and the county, as generously as you know, agreed to match our local expenditures on lead abatement with county ARPA money. Dollar for dollar. Not real, not real sexy necessarily. You may not read about it too much online, but we also got that new $2 million screw press project at the wastewater plant. That's a vital part of our wastewater treatment. The screw press at the end of the process squeezes as much water as possible out of that sewage sludge, which then gets stored and eventually applied to farm fields. And this was a major investment with financing help from Wisconsin's Clean Water Fund. Some of you might remember the old press, which was over 40 years old, I believe. And we had to call on Collinburg here in town, God bless them, to to engineer and produce some replacement parts for the old one when we couldn't get it. So that's some of the infrastructure stuff that's been happening. Ah, we have a member of the audience featured here, Wendy Brand, who chaired, co-chaired the fundraising for Central Park West. Yeah, I've got a few slides of this one because it was a major community accomplishment in 2023. Photo at the top is the old Central Park Bandstand. Central Park West has been a public gathering place since about 1881. Central Park West, you know, a very ambitious project sprung out of a citizen committee that council approved, putting together to look at, gee, where could we put a skating rink? Where could we put a new splash pad? They came up with a very impressive vision for Central Park West. And I think you heard some comments to that earlier tonight from council. So just looking at last year, it was pretty cool. We had the Schmidt family here stepping up for $100,000 naming commitment for the Schmidt Brothers stage. That actually became about $130,000 by the time you added in some of the accoutrements that recognized the Schmidt family on the 18th Street side of the stage. There were seven other major naming gifts included Two Rivers Rotary and a private donor shown there, $65,000 for the skating loop. Dave Wagian, his wife Sandra Merzien, $60,000 for the splash pad, a number of generous gifts, $43,000 from the Jim Todd estate, and this council authorized naming the park pavilion in honor of Jim. Lot of community buy-in, 21 major gifts of over $5,000 in addition to the naming gifts. 87, that wasn't meant to be Tether, but okay, 87 Tether individual donations that totaled $80,000. Paver purchases, that was meant to be sort of a sideline. We had three paver fields, ended up having five paver fields, and that raised darn near $120,000 for the project. And our State of Wisconsin Economic Development Corp. added, helped us with a $50,000 Vibrant Spaces grant. Over $835,000 raised for the now completed project. A year ago, that just about a year ago now, that picture in the upper left-hand corner, the new stage was rising. Vinton had not yet torn down the old one. What I think is amazing and a tribute to our city crews and a great local low bid contractor, Vinton Construction. This whole thing started in late December, and in the middle of July, on a wing and a prayer, we promised the Schmidt family they could have their reunion and concert. We said, you'll at least have a stage and maybe some muddy sod out in front of it. The complete park was done. And that really is a tribute to the cooperation of our contractor, our city crews. We saw a great summer of city activities out there. The 15th, the Schmitz did their dedication and family reunion. The 16th was the overall park dedication. And then it was full on into the Brian Lee Blues Fest and our full summer of activities. If you're, if you didn't feel you know, your chest swelled a little bit driving by and seeing kids play in the splash pad, well, talk to me after the meeting because you should have. Again, transitioned into winter, the first ever cool city Christmas happened between Thanksgiving and Christmas, gonna happen again next year. Again, just some of the winter scenes, even reindeer and happy kids in Central Park, and they're still skating out there. Picking up again on the theme of investing in community quality of life, the council saw fit to advance the Neshota Park Master Plan that was developed last year with a lot of public input with an investment in the first major new playground, really a destination playground at Neshota Park. And that was dedicated in in October of last year. Can't wait for spring to arrive again, maybe in March, who knows, and to to see kids enjoying that. But council has budgeted some funding this year, and we're looking to leverage other funds with that to begin improvements to the pedestrian walkways within the park, maybe add some more play equipment and commence creating some of the pollinator gardens and naturalized areas in the more westerly areas of the park to the west of Peter Street. So more good things to come over at Neshota Park, which really is the crown jewel of the city's system. And give a lot of credit to the Advisory Rec Board and our Parks and Rec staff for pulling together a plan that provides a vision for just making that park better. We talked about local development. Tourism certainly garnered a few headlines. A, we were not in litigation, and we don't plan to be here in Two Rivers on our tourism program. We had two directors last year. Our our current director, Joe Metzen, came on board in January. He's he's working hard with the Explore Two Rivers Committee and our Room Tax Commission and brings very capable leadership to that position. As an indicator of visitor revenue or visitor activity, the chart on the right, which you've seen before, tracks the history of our room tax revenues. They waffled around in the 115 to 120,000 a year range for a long time, took a jump in 2020. Probably the New Cobblestone Hotel that opened in August was part of that. Also a fair number of vacation rentals in the community. And we have continued to see growth. Most recently, 2023, we closed out with just over $324,000 in room tax revenue. So that that gives Explore Two Rivers and the city's Room Tax Commission some real financial horsepower to continue promoting and growing quality tourism. And hopefully, that's quality tourism that means more services, business, food and drink offerings than we could support on our own as a community of 11,000. So that's certainly the goal, not just to have tourism, but tourism that enhances community quality of life. Residential development's important. The city about 20 years ago got in that business with a development plan for the so-called College Hill property because that getting the UW Manischewak system campus didn't work out so well back in the 1960s. Plan B, there was a need for housing. The Conservation Subdivision was developed. We saw six new homes built up there in 2023. There are currently two spec homes available, one recently completed and out on the MLS, another very close to completion under construction. That's a really good thing in Two Rivers, Wisconsin, because for a while, for a long while, we didn't have anybody doing spec homes, new homes for the community. So we'll talk in another slide about plans for this year for Phase Three at Sandy Bay. Of course, all over the country, home values went up. That's kind of nice, and it's kind of ugly at the same time if you're looking to buy a home, especially as a first time home buyer. But Wisconsin Department of Revenue Sales Study showed that the total equalized value of this city grew by 16% over the course of 2022, propelled primarily by a 19% increase in the value of existing residential properties. And that actually outpaced countywide increase in the value of existing residential, which was 14%. You'll note 19% up on existing residential. Why were we up only 16% in total? Much of that was a 4% decline in our commercial values. And no question, that is something we need to be working on. The arts, thanks to Main Street's leadership, I would say very strong support through the city with our utilities, Public Works and Park staff. We saw local artists whose works were featured on downtown banners, and we also saw the work of the yarn bombers. I gotta say, Kathy Haley from Crescent Woolen Mills was integral to that. She's in the audience tonight, and we thank the people that contributed their talents. And guess what? I got an email this past weekend. The bombers are coming back for for this year. So that is just super exciting. And and of course, the good efforts of Main Street with the downtown planters maintained by the landscaping folks at Green Acres. Our downtown has been looking increasingly great in recent summers. I think we're all very grateful for that. That's a true community effort. In the in the realm of public art, we also appreciate the contributions of our Sister Cities Committee. Private donors associated with the committee and supportive of its work commissioned the new excuse me, the new mural on the side of Rick Carey's building downtown heralding our sister city. We welcome Vaslav Fiala, artist from the Czech Republic, who actually got here almost a week before his created creation. It got a little tense there as it was held up in customs in Chicago. But with help from our Public Works crews, we were super pleased to dedicate the new friendship table, public art in the park. Entirely donated again, in part by our sister city, but also by interested private supporters out here in the park. And we do have a contingent of folks and Two Rivers high school students returning to Domaschleitz this spring to continue what is now a seven-year-old Sister Cities relationship. Out at the industrial park, of course, we had good news in December with Brown Building Center announcing its trust division, also known now as Athens Development LLC, planning a $2.1 million investment, 28,000 square feet with a new building on Brown's Drive. That the sale of that roughly 10 acre site closed in December. They'll be in front of the Plan Commission and CBA for site plan approval this spring, and will be well under construction later this year. They hope to be in that building by 2025. Council did approve a TIF grant and a loan from the city's Economic Development Loan Fund. I had to embargo this slide until tonight, but something else to look forward to is certainly how things progress with planning and permitting and et cetera, for the proposed battery energy storage project, which not only is good for the grid, but could have considerable economic tax-based benefit to this community and our ability to provide public services and and reinvest in public infrastructure. Yes, Starbucks is planning to come to 1509 Washington Street downtown. The city is not subsidizing that development, but I I think along the way, did at least improve some things with some changes to ordinances such that we won't have a drive-through entry and exit coming off Washington Street, but indeed the side street. And it is new investment in the downtown by folks that I think know quite a bit about doing economic feasibility studies. And we all, by the way, I gotta say, we all love our local coffee. And if we if we fail to support it, shame on us. We have, we have great local businesses that I think we all appreciate. I'll leave it at that on that one. Up at Sandy Bay Highlands, because we're just about out of lots in Phases One and Two, there are another 17 acres owned by the city. And the council gave approval earlier this year to proceed with the design and permitting work for Phases Two and Three. That should be another 30 to 35 lots. We are in some final steps as far as permitting approval with DNR and hope to be back in front of council with bids for the infrastructure extension for Phase Two. However defined, probably 13 to 15 more lots yet this year, so we can get that in by the end of the construction season. West Riverlofts, we've talked about a lot over the past two years. It is moving closer to reality. About a $14 million project with both affordable and market rate units. I will point out, though, this this last paragraph, the project has recently experienced a delay related to determining responsible party for onsite contamination with PFAS. You're hearing that elsewhere. Thermo Fisher's site continued study for PFAS. PFAS is every, literally is everywhere and is impacting redevelopment act. PFAS is every, literally is everywhere and is impacting redevelopment activity everywhere. So stay tuned on that one. And in two weeks, Kip Golden from CR Structures will be back here to talk with council for a status update on the Confluence Project, which is planned and has been promoted as a $17 million investment in a 71-unit market rate apartment building that they've proposed for the former Eggers Downtown Plant Site on the East Wind River. So be eager to hear an update on that. Something I hopefully get to discuss more is in the coming year is more active discussion of plans to redevelop the historic Water Department High Lift Building as a trailhead and visitor information center. That would be in tandem with efforts of Explore Two Rivers and the Shipwreck Coast National Marine Sanctuary. This conceptual drawing, which I think most of you have seen, does address preserving that historic building, restoring the windows, creating an entry off the bike ped trail, Mariners Trail, likewise renovating the interior for a trailhead with public restrooms, possible visitor information. The Marine Sanctuary, they haven't committed funding yet, but this is one of four projects they've recognized or identified in their facilities plan, one in each of the four host cities. The idea in Two Rivers, there could be some interpretive displays and, and public information associated with this part of the National Marine Sanctuary. And council did approve in the TID number 12 budget for this year, another $25,000 to advance the design and cost estimates, so we can be pursuing funding for that project, ideally as much outside funding as we can. Little text heavy here, but other things in the, in the coming year, council, you know these from, from budget, but again, to share with the community, the big street reconstruction project will be Roosevelt Avenue from Sixth Street to 12th Street, all utilities included. That's about a $5 million project. Matt, it is out for bid presently. The design for the project does include eliminating parking on one side of the street that will shift back and forth a couple of times over the course of the street. So the parking lanes will be where most of the demand is, we anticipate. That allows for more green space. It helps with stormwater management and a big aim is to achieve some traffic calming along that major collector street because it's kind of stark now and people do, we've had a lot of complaints about folks speeding there. That was confirmed at the public, the first public information meeting a few weeks back. Excuse me. The project does include about 50 lead water service lateral replacements. As far LSLs or lead service laterals at other locations, we're pursuing about 200 at other locations, as I mentioned, jointly funded by city and county shares of the ARPA funds that came from the feds. We are gathering more information on a new environmental loan program, financing program for providing low interest loans to homeowners for any portion of the private side lead lateral replacement that they may incur. More on that later. There is the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Project on the Washington Street Bridge funded through TID number 12, the Cobblestone Hotel TID. And as you know, that'll create a new safer bike ped facility on the Downriver or McDonald's side of the bridge in place of the existing sidewalk with a crash barrier to protect the trail there from vehicular traffic. And the intent is to get that done prior to DOT redecking that bridge and resurfacing all of Memorial Drive in 2025. We've got Sandy Bay Highlands, Phase Three, I mentioned earlier, extending Brown's Drive a little bit out at the industrial park to serve Bron's project, about a $200,000 spend. There's 135,000 for concrete pavement replacement around town, including hopefully a couple of these downtown sidewalks. We will not be doing stamped concrete again there. Continued improvements at Neshota Park, again, 120,000 in the budget. We hope to leverage some outside funding. We'll wrap up the replacement of two DPW dump and plow trucks. That's a $500,000 investment between two budgets, looking to replace this year the city's now 11-year-old street sweeper, borrowing and repaying that from the stormwater utility, replacement of two police department patrol vehicles previously addressed by council, and an automated beach condition warning system, which is where I wrap up the State of the City report. I, I think this, this is really important in light of the, A, the tragic drowning that we experienced at our beach first time ever last summer. And because it allows the use of technology, so people are getting information in real time from the National Weather Service. This project approved for funding out of room tax dollars through the city's Room Tax Commission will provide for installing automated beach hazard warning signs. I believe two are planned at Neshota and one at the so-called New Beach near the North Pier. Parks and Rec is on that, working with the electric utility as it relates to installation. And we hope to have that operational in time for this year's beach season. We heard a lot of discussion after the tragic accident last summer about places that deploy, you know, flag systems, red, yellow, green. The only problem, as we've read about from some studies in Michigan, too often it's the wrong flag that's flying. This would be a direct tie via cell phone to the National Weather Service and in real time would advise people with information right in front of them. It's on our phones now, but right in front of them on signage about beach conditions. So I applaud the Room Tax Commission's support for that investment. And with an uncharacteristically winter scene for this year, that is my state of the city. Any questions? Otherwise, we'll move along quickly. Because I'm running out of breath, I know that. Okay, shoot. As far as the standard city manager's report for this agenda. I'll leave you at the harbor. Personnel update within the electric utility, you know that due to retirement, we've had a vacancy in a line worker position after advertising the position and interviewing a good number of candidates. This, there were a good number of outside candidates for this, but ultimately the best rose to the top and pleased to say that Tyler Dusing, who's been working for us for, I'm gonna guess, a couple of years now. Two, thank you, Brian. As our electrician and electrical inspector has now advanced to the line worker apprentice position, so he, he's entered the ranks of the line crew. Steven Greetz, who's also been with us about two years as meter technician, who is pursuing his master electrician licensure. All goes well there and we should know very shortly, would be advanced, is advancing to the electrician and electrical inspector position. Two young men, both, both local that have really shown in their positions. And it's great when you see good people advancing up the ranks at the utility. That does mean we are recruiting presently for a meter technician. And this one, I should have given it a headline, dang it. But a, a big, very important upcoming recruitment will be for a new finance director for the city. Dave Bus, first as accountant and more recently as finance director, has, has been with the city 25 years. Recently announced his plans to retire. His last day of work will be June 21. We want to get this advertised and I'll be talking to personnel and finance about finding room within the budget, some other positions we haven't filled to make sure that we can budget for some overlap because Dave has a wealth of knowledge and obviously has provided outstanding service to the city, this, to the council, to this community.
Very smart. There's a lot of knowledge there.
Yep, lot of knowledge.
Hopefully you share that with your predecessor.
And your successor.
Successor. Successor, successor, your predecessor. Your successor.
His predecessor was okay.
But not as good.
That's right. Yes, as Dave said, he's off, off mic, he's the one to blame. So we'll, we'll throw more accolades and flowery stuff Dave's way later. In the meantime, he's working like a dog to get every financial report for this year out and look forward to getting someone on board who can work with him. But in, in all sincerity, Dave, thank you. And those are going to be some big shoes to fill. We got, it's not summer yet, but Parks and Rec staff has been working hard and with the support we enjoy with donations to the Events and Activities Fund, there's a full lineup of bands on the beach and concerts in the park. You'll be seeing more of this. I won't spend much time on it, but it's going to be another fantastic summer, both at the beach and downtown in the, on the Schmidt Brothers stage. The new Manitowoc Two Rivers Visitor Guide jointly produced through efforts of the tourism offices of the city of Manitowoc and the city of Two Rivers. And special thanks to Elizabeth Rungy, our Community Development Director, because again, this year she got called upon to step into the, into the breach, as it were, and handle Two Rivers end of it. There are significantly more pages. There's very good participation by both Two Rivers and Manitowoc advertisers. Dang it, I meant to bring a copy and have copies in front of you, but it's a beautiful piece and look forward to seeing it out there. And we look forward to even better things as our new director and the Explore Two Rivers Board really take, take the reins and, and move forward. We just remind you, the World on the Move Smithsonian exhibit, a traveling exhibit at Leicester Public Library starts March 18th and will continue to April 24th. Should be phenomenal. It, again, Leicester is one of 15 libraries in the U.S. to host this, this exhibit, which is pretty amazing. It's in San Jose, it's in El Paso, Columbus, Ohio, New Rochelle, New York, a lot, lot of much bigger communities and yes, Two Rivers, Wisconsin. So Jeff and the library staff, amazing stuff. Oh yeah, you got, you got the bad with the good. As of March 1st, no, I'm sorry, as of February 1st, we've transitioned from the stickers that are on sale at retail being the old $2.50 stickers in place since 2009 to the new $3 stickers that are going to continue to fund our solid waste fund and the increased costs for both collection and land filling. If you've got those old $2.50 stickers, you can continue using them through Friday, March 1st. So you've got a few weeks yet. After that, the, the collection folks will only be taking the $3 stickers. If you gave a bunch of them for Christmas or you've got a bunch of them stashed in the junk drawer in the kitchen, you can come by City Hall and cash them and trade them out at par for, or is that the right way to put it? For $2.50 apiece toward new stickers. Thank you. That would not be at par. Thank you. You caught me on that one, Max. Sandy Bay Highlands, everything's moving forward there. We are awaiting approval on one more relatively small wetland that needs to be filled and was previously approved by DNR, but now needs Corps of Engineers and DNR approval. We'll give you an update on that. Again, this is a preliminary layout for Phases Three and Four, the remaining 17 acres. Darla talked about this, but Two Rivers Main Streets, one of their major annual fundraisers in place of what had been the Spring Wine Walk Suite Street. And you get a box and you get to go to businesses all over downtown and collect treats. Now you can collect them or eat them on the way, whichever, but a nice seasonal treat coming up this Saturday, the 10th. Manitowoc County 35th Annual Winter Derby, Shoto Conservation Club. I don't expect they might be fishing from the shore out there this year, given ice conditions or the lack of it. But I, they do a lot of great things throughout the year and I know would appreciate the support out at Shoto Conservation Club off county at VV in the town of Travers. TRBA, the Two Rivers Business Association is doing a fundraising night, comedy night at the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum. You can still buy tickets in advance for $10 apiece or they're $15 at the door. Sounds like a great evening of entertainment. That's this coming Saturday and all for the benefit of our Two Rivers Business Association and the great things they do in the community. Thank you, TRBA. Ah, thank you, as well as the future business leaders. Thank you. That's right, our TRBA president, Kevin, is here. Thank you, Kevin. Because the Tanaska people were here from Omaha, he wore his, his Husker shirt. You got a daughter that's an alum, right? Son that's an alum. I, I thought, I always heard the Nebraska fans go to Ollie away games because it just gets them out of Nebraska, but no. Actually, Omaha, Omaha's a great place. Just ask, just ask Warren Buffett and others. Hamilton Wood Type is going to be doing a big wood type letterpress workshop a week from Saturday, the 17th. Check that out. Tropical Blast fundraiser for Woodland Dunes. It's their big fundraiser of the year, the following Saturday, the 24th of February over at Sepia Chapel. I, if tickets are still available, I bet you they'll sell out soon. So follow up on that if you want to attend. There is a pro wrestling classic, which is organized by Manitowoc County Mariners over at the J E Hamilton Community House Gym. So you don't even have to leave downtown Two Rivers for professional wrestling. And that is coming up as well. Finally, we got a lot of emails on this and a lot of queries on Facebook. The Harbor Cam is back up and running from a beautiful spot atop the Two Rivers wastewater treatment plant. Just don't look down. You can, you can scan the beach, zoom in, zoom out. The old one died just about two or three months after it was out of warranty and the new one is back up and running. So check it out. I've asked, been asked by a couple of council members just to update on this, what's the status of the ordinance discussed at, I think, January council meeting? Change in the sign code to possibly allow businesses to place signage atop the public sidewalks? That'll be back in front of the Plan Commission at its meeting next Monday for its recommendations relative to details or the rules that would be associated. Plan Commission had recommended not approving such an ordinance. City Council had indicated a desire, at least on a trial basis, to give it a try. So the, the request is back to Plan Commission. Well, if it, if it is given a try, what are some recommended guidelines and regulations? I anticipate that'll be back in front of council two weeks from tonight. And then depending on your, your take on it, there's also been discussion at the Public Works Committee of Council that you might want to assimilate in. Up to council, but probably in March, should be a public hearing on the zoning code change that would make that possible. And believe it or not, with one more plug, to go to exploretworivers.com for most complete up-to-date information on events and activities. That's my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that.
Yep.
Catch a water break, huh? On to number 10, consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are two. It's a regular city council meeting of January 15th, 2024, and a work session city council meeting of January 29th, 2024. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meeting, there are one, it's a Business and Industrial Development Committee and Community Development Authority meeting on January 30th, 2024. Recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, applications and petitions, there are three. We have a temporary Class B retailer's license for Ron Colly Athletic Association TRCCS volleyball tournament at the J E Hamilton House Gym and Lobby, March 2nd through the 3rd, 2024, from 7:30 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. We also have a temporary Class B retailer's license for Two Rivers Youth Sports for the Prices Right Game Show at the J E Hamilton House Gym and Lobby, February 24th, 2024, from noon till 11:00 p.m. And finally, three, a temporary Class B retailer's license for Manitowoc County Mariners Football LLC Wrestling at the J E House Gym and Lobby, February 17th, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The recommended action is a motion to approve the applications and authorize issuance of the licenses. And under D, finance reports for November 2023, there are four. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. And finally, under E, a summary of verified bills for the month of January 2024 in the amount of $5,312,236.58. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. And the recommendation for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to, to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, I saw Darla, then Tracy. So yeah, Darla then Tracy, any council discussion? I will abstain because I do have a event listed in this for a temporary Class B license. So all others indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Brings us on to number 11, city council formal items. Under A, we have an ordinance amending municipal code, Section 2-5-5 entitled Environmental Advisory Board to repeal and replace Section 2-5-5E duties. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Greg.
This came out of the EAB, was, had preliminary discussion at city council a couple of months ago at a work session. I know it went back to the board. I'll let Darla speak to it primarily as, as chair of that committee. But I would note, in addition to sustainability, the term resiliency, I certainly lobbied hard to get in here because as we've seen fluctuations in the levels of Lake Michigan, the issue of resiliency in terms of the community with key infrastructure to, to protect that infrastructure and those services is, is very important. It's also a key consideration we see in some, frankly, some of the federal and state funding for great It's also a key consideration we see in some, frankly, some of the federal and state funding for Great Lakes initiatives. So, uh, that's, I think, more consistent with what some of the priorities are today, but I'll defer Darla and Tracy are both on E A B. Thank you.
This refreshes, um, our description of what our duties are and what our goals are. Because since it was, you know, since the, uh, the duties were first outlined, times have changed and we have to be a little bit more cognizant of, um, more environmental issues that can affect us, especially since we are sitting right on Lake Michigan or in between two rivers. And we have a lot of nature around us. We have the Woodland Dunes. Um, we have the, um, school forest. We want to make sure that we protect all of this as best that we can. It can be very expensive to do so. Um, so it is nice to be able to get grants. And if you have these two words in your description, you're going to be able to kind of rise more to the top when you're, um, app, you know, filling out your applications for the grants. Um, the name is not changing because it's already pretty cumbersome and I didn't want to have, we'd never fit the, the entire name that we proposed onto y- you know, a, a yard sign, so we're not going to do that. But I think that this definitely meets the criteria from the city council's recommendations from the last time. And, um, I hope you guys are happy with it and make a motion to approve.
Okay, uh, looking for a motion on this? Thank you, Scott. Seconded by, one second, Tracy. Council discussion. Bonnie?
I think you should be called the Environmental Assistant Board. Because I see that word a lot.
Assistance?
Yes. It's already, already got the A. You don't have to change any logo on your t-shirts. It's my comment.
Anybody else?
Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, under the proposed mission statement in E duties, it, it says to provide support to the Public Works Committee of the City Council. I, I'm just curious as to why it's not providing that support to the whole council. Most of our boards, if not all of our boards and commissions, uh, report back to City Council, not to any, another advisory board of the City Council, if that makes sense.
That was how it was set up to begin with, and that's the way it was, um, when this was brought back. The E A B was brought back to life.
Well, because on the top one, I know the first part goes to Public Works, but then it men- mentions, uh, will be a further act and resource for the city manager, City Council. And it just says the City Council are, is kind of knocked out of there. In the red, it references City Council a few times and the new one does not reference City Council.
I'm looking at the proposed mission statement and board name.
Yeah, he's, what he's asking is.
It's in E, right?
E, E is the lined one that is in red. That's what I'm looking at. It, it only references going to the Public Works Committee, so it's essentially advising another advisory.
Right, but what it is.
Instead of a, a, advising the City Council as a whole, when it goes to setting policy like what was red or was kind of lined out under the old one.
We had this originally, the way, what's lined out right now. And City Council had problems with that. So we shortened it, we answer to the Public Works Committee, and then the Public Works Committee, then they go to City Council. We are, we're under their umbrella. Because a lot of what we do has to do with Public Works. We work in tandem with them. So whatever's happening with the E A B is reported through Public Works.
Okay, it's just a little odd that, like I said, like an advisory board advising another advisory board.
Now, basically, E A B isn't, is an ad hoc committee to Public Works.
Okay. And then, so number two, when it says to assist in identifying funding opportunities and partnerships, the implement, the implementation of such policies and initiatives, that would have to go through council, I would assume? I'm just curious. When it states policies of implementation under two?
Because that's, this is in support of Public Works. If there's something that they want assistance on, that's, that's what we do. That's, you know, if they want assistance or identi- most of the time, they don't. They come and tell us, Matt says, this is what I'm applying for.
Okay.
And he will use.
So then you advise, you advise Public Works again on some of those who advises City Council on such funding opportunities.
Public Works will come.
Come.
From the formal.
And then the last one is number four, when it talks about, uh, city services and facilities. Um, I just don't want to see too much of an overstep of other committees because I, I see that happening a little bit right now with the Advisory Rec Board. Uh, when you guys are working on plans for parks and so on, so forth. It's kind of a overstep there.
Is it number four?
Yeah.
Provide assistance on resiliency and sustainability policies and initiatives.
City services and facilities.
Right.
So such as parks.
Those, those particular words were put in there so that they all could make use of this committee if they choose to when applying for grants.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of federal grants up there. Some of them have pots of a billion dollars to s- put out to communities, um, for urban forestry, whatever, and they can point to say, look, we have, uh, a subcommittee to our Public Works, our city, that says that, you know, we, we work, we're working on resiliency and sustainability.
I mean, as long as it's not going to do more overlapping of other committees.
That's, that's, that's for them to use so that it's a kind of official, sort of like when we do resolutions to, to give them a little meat to, to what they're doing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because, uh, like I said, there was some overlap there with Advisory Rec Board on s- some of the park stuff. When, like paddlers park and, um, resiliency programs for sustainable park structures and so on, so forth. That was, that was part, part of some of your meetings, yeah.
Well, I mean, we have a really good working relationship with parks and rec.
Right, and you, you can. I'm just making sure there's not an overstep of planning stuff in parks.
No, we're not planning in parks.
No, no. Okay, that was my question on that. Anybody else? See, none. We are changing an ordinance. We are amending that, which will require a rule call vote. Lisa?
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Patri? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Stick, Scott Steckmesser? Adam Wawowski?
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach? Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, thank you for that.
Okay, there we go. On to B. It is a ordinance to amend municipal code section one dash two dash one entitled license, permit, and other fees established to remove the fee listed for storage canopies. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. And Greg?
Uh, my understanding, this, this came out of, uh, planning and zoning, basically the erection or installation of any new storage canopies, these are these freestanding, they might be metal, they might be fabric covered, uh, has been, um, the ability to place any more of those has been eliminated by a change to the city's zoning ordinance. Those that were in existence as of the time of that ordinance change have effectively been grandfathered. But there's, there's, there's no need to have a fee or create the, the confusion that might come for having a fee now for something that's generally prohibited. So that's, that's why it's recommended the fee go away.
Okay, looking for a motion on this? Thank you, Bill. Seconded by Tracy. Council discussion.
I don't, what is a storage canopy?
Again, a, a metal frame typically with either metal siding over it. Sometimes it's fabric or plastic. You see them at Menards. I'll, I'll give you the shorthand. It's when you fill your garage up with crap and you need a place to park your car, you get a storage canopy and you stick it in front of your garage. Um, that was pretty close to the truth. And, uh, what we got into at Plan Commission was, well, once that starts happening, then uh, kind of like the earlier discussion, do you allow storage of cans of gasoline and flammables and other things? So it was generally seen that, you know, these aren't really in many cases, an appropriate or desired addition to neighbor, to residential neighborhoods in lieu of a garage or an, an approved, uh, accessory building like a garden shed, a, a real structure constructed in keeping with the building code with a permit. And sometime, they can become effectively blighted. And, uh, so that's, may not be the best explanation and.
These are the ones we allow, right?
Those are the ones.
We don't allow the ones with the walls. We allow just the, right, we allow the overhead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's what happens. Your garage fills up and then you park your car under the storage canopy.
Anybody else? See, none. Once again, it's an ordinance, rule call vote. Lisa?
Tim Patri?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Wawowski?
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right, motion carries. Thank you. On to C, ordinance to amend section six dash five dash seven of the municipal code entitled Restrictions on Keeping Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals to Address Certain Restricted Species. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance as requested by the police department?
Captain Rates can certainly address this. He's, he's here tonight, uh, standing in for the chief. This request does come out of the police department. It's based on similar ordinances in several other communities, notably Manitowoc, immediately to our south. Uh, as Captain can expound on maybe a little bit, the police department has occasion to come across some really interesting critters sometimes in the course of visiting properties within the city.
Ed, uh, Rattlesnake brought this about, so that's over here today. Um, but the ordinance addresses not only, uh, exotic and wild animals, but also, uh, commonly considered to be farm animals, I guess, cows, horses, pigs, things of that nature as well. Um, uh, we adopted the ordinance, uh, based on, uh, not only Manitowoc, but Wausau, uh, Green Bay, uh, Madison and Appleton, I believe those were the before. Yes. You have any questions on anything with it?
Does it overregulate state?
Uh, to my knowledge, uh, no. Forgive me, I was kind of thrown into this last minute, so I'm kind of, I don't believe so.
I mean, certainly there are some common domestic things, pigs, goats, turkeys, that in some jurisdictions, you know, like out in the town, you could freely have, I think, without speaking for their zoning. But, um, so it would be more restricted. I don't know that state law restricts.
Mostly s- state is if it's a wild animal in the state of Wisconsin, you can't have it as a cat.
Right, right. And I think that's, that's part of what this umbrella covers. Yeah.
But it has in your stuff that aren't native to Wisconsin, which the state says it is legal for you to have.
Something to look into, but looking at some of the background up here, it does reference state code or the state statute multiple times. So I'm hoping that we aren't superseding state because obviously we can't do that. We can't be more restrictive, to my knowledge.
Statute's referred to are in chapter one seventy-four. Which deals largely with dogs as opposed to other animals. I think Wisconsin has really very few laws applicable to exotic, uh, animals. So I, I, I don't really think there's anything in the nature of a preemption problem here. But it's not something I've looked at in detail.
It doesn't preempt. It certainly addresses things that state law, I gather, is silent on. Yeah, our zoning laws cover this to some extent. I think it was, we actually have, it was a conditional use that was granted a few years ago to a homeowner that was annexed in on Lincoln Avenue near the high school that has got a pony and some goats and some other livestock because those typically aren't allowed in residential areas in the city. So, yeah, I mean, as I, and I haven't spent any time with this ordinance, but as I look at some of the common livestock that are prohibited, it doesn't supersede state law, but it isn't automatic that those prohibitions exist outside the city generally. Most cities prohibit livestock and things like that. Out in the country, out in the town, often you can have them.
But I was just looking at it from the cat point of view because there's a lot of exotic cats that are small. It can be house pets and stuff where then this kind of looks like it's illegal to have one.
Yeah, I think it, uh, I think it covers all, any sort of exotic cat. Because the question I actually had for the chief when I asked about it to you because it talks about, it, it lists all these, but obviously there's other ones as well. So that'd be up to the chief's discretion, I guess, at that point, if he wants to approve it with a waiver, so.
That's the only reason I would be against it is there's a lot of small cats that are pets.
Yeah.
Do you want to maybe, uh, table this and maybe get down to refining it? I don't think if we have people that have had these domestic animals that are other cats that are more, I guess, rare. I don't know that we want to make them, kick them out of their houses if they're not causing us problems, especially if they're pretty much domesticated. I don't, I don't know that we need to kick them to the curb.
And there, and there might be the need for documenting that to at least grandfather.
Sure, or something of that nature.
I'm, I'm sure if council wanted to table, that's an option.
Tracy?
I have another question because, um, I don't, I have both red and green ink on here. And in one, let's see, section D, paragraph two, we're talking about certain just domestic species prohibited. And after all the red, it has in green llama, alpaca, camel, or animal raised for fur bearing. So does that mean you, you can't have them if you're raising them for fur? But if you have them for other purposes, it'd be okay? Like perhaps riding, riding a camel to school? I don't know.
You don't do that?
I probably would.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can address that and probably rewrite that. We'll clear.
Uh, is, yeah, the ones in green, I don't know, they may have been notes for somebody, but they're in here, so.
Might be a good one for the February work session with Chief Minard.
Let's kick this back. Scott's going to table it. We'll second that with Jeff. Uh, we'll make that real simple and easy. I don't know that we need discussion on tabling because we don't have to. So all in favor indicate by saying aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to D, a resolution pertaining to community pool facilities. The recommended action is a motion to read and adopt that resolution. Greg?
Yes, um, council has had on several occasions now over the last year, had, had two or three meetings with representatives of the Two Rivers, Two Rivers Family Swim Center. The most recent one was, um, last week, Monday, the twenty-ninth of January, uh, during the city council work session. Uh, Family Swim Center, which has been operated for over sixty years, basically the, the board made the tough decision near the close of the twenty twenty-three season that given uh, the age and condition of the facilities and the cost to bring them up to code and, or replace them, uh, that sadly the center will not be reopening for the twenty twenty-four season or the future unless the funding can be secured for a new facility. Uh, there was, I thought, pretty good discussion between the swim center reps and city council with input from city staff last week. Um, I know this is a bit of a windy resolution. They want to dispense with reading and just do a summary, but I think it's important that the, the facts of this be stated for the record. Uh, I don't want anyone to leave here tonight thinking, oh, this means willy-nilly, the council's going to, the city council's approving building a new pool or bearing the full cost for operating one. The intent here is that there be a serious buckle-down effort to look at what are the community's needs uh, for aquatics facilities? How are they best served? And yes, that should include some good dialogue about uh, an existing high school pool within the community. The YMCA, uh, facility just down the road with the Manitowoc Aquatic Center should entail discussion of location. discussion of location, capital costs, projected operating costs, because I don't know if a municipal pool that breaks even or makes money, there's typically a taxpayer subsidy or support required. But it, it does, I'll, I'll just summarize, provides that uh an ad hoc committee on community aquatics with folks from city staff, the family swim center, the advisory rec board, and interested citizens. There might be somebody out there with a great background in community pools that we don't know about, um, that um city manager and the Parks and Rec director bring back a proposed list of appointees to that group. That, yes, it does mean the Parks and Rec director and rec staff are going to be providing some staff support to this group because it has the status of an ad hoc or temporary specialized public body. There's a list of things that that committee, um, not by way of limitation, but things that the the city would want to see, uh, would address, and those are enumerated there with A through G. And it acknowledges in the closing paragraph that as the work of this committee proceeds, there's certainly a good chance there could be the need to secure services of a design professional or a firm to assist in developing preliminary plans, construction cost estimates, operating cost estimates. If it comes to that need, there would be an expectation for the community to step up as opposed to necessarily a city line item uh to fund that. So um, you can still ask that it be read, I won't read it, I'll make Lisa do it or make, but that, that is the resolution in front of you, and it anticipates taking a good, serious look at this. As we discussed last time, the swim center folks have, they aren't here asking for capital funding. They've, and I'll, they certainly can speak to it, but they've represented, they would take the lead on that. If the city can find some grant money along the way, it'd be great. But they're saying basically, would the city agree to take on a pool as a city operation if we do that? And as we discussed last week with Wisconsin's levy limits law, if there would have to be any appreciable tax, the city property tax contribution, say fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year, pulling numbers out of the air for a pool, uh, that wouldn't just be an advisory referendum, we would need a binding vote of the people to exceed our levy limits. So that's, I must, probably could have read it and it would have been shorter, but that's essentially what's in this resolution.
Again, this resolution is not committing any dollars whatsoever to this project that is purely looking at a design, trying to get together with the swim center, with the rec department and other people that want to be part of this uh board to get the design so that if we do move forward with this and the swim team um makes a push for their capital on this, that the city itself knows what that design is going to be and how much we could possibly be on the hook for the operational. But there will be no city tax dollars into this committee as a whole, other than the fact that we are providing uh rec department staff to uh to assist with these meetings and essentially run those meetings. Um, again, that, you can find this resolution, it's part of the city council packet, if you do want the pretty much two-page document, one and a half, uh, it is on the city website under city council and the agenda packet, you will be able to find it there uh where you can read the whole thing. So looking for a motion because council has read it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Darla. Any council discussion? Bonnie.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is just a study because my battery just died. When I um was reading it, it, it sounded like it was a commitment. I mean, that's how, how I was in being impressed, and I just want to make sure.
We are just committing to having this board.
It's just a study.
There's no financials exchanged here or committed here whatsoever.
Nope.
We're not saying yes or no to a pool, it's just.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just want.
Look into it. Yep.
Well, I agree with that, I just didn't want to, you know, it's not a bad idea, but there's, it just seems like a bad time to start putting money into it, into something like, like this. I, the idea is nice, but.
I've never come to the council and heard it was a good time.
What's that?
I'm not regarding, but I hear you.
Well, and the other thing, why don't you also check out some of these hotels with pools? They've been allowing Two Rivers citizens to use their pools for quite a while. I'm just saying.
That's another existing resource, that's true.
Any other council discussion? See none, resolution, roll call vote, Lisa.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Wawoski.
Aye.
Jeff Dolkey. Tracy Coach. Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc. Tim Patri. All in favor.
All right, motion carries. On to the final one, it is E, a resolution proclaiming February eleventh, twenty-twenty-four as two dash one dash one day. Recommended action, motion to read and adopt the resolution, that's a new one.
This one, this one was request, requested by our local United Way office. Uh, two-one-one is a, a, a number that's available to connect individuals with different community resources and volunteer opportunities, so uh, it's, it's laid out within this and uh, this would have the city joining with other communities across the state and across the, well, across the state at least, uh, two-one-one, which is celebrate two-one-one Wisconsin and increase public awareness, proclaiming February eleven as two-one-one day in the city.
All right. Yeah, looking for a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Scott. Seconded by Tracy. Council discussion. None? All right, r- resolution, roll call vote, Lisa.
Adam Wawoski.
Aye.
Jeff Dolkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach. Bill Leclerc. Darla Leclerc. Tim Patri. Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
All in favor.
Perfect, motion carries.
Lost my mic, and there we go, it's back again. It just keeps cutting in and out. Dave, I think is playing tricks on me. On to for information only, Greg, you got that or you want me to cover?
Yeah, so I'm sorry I didn't bring that up earlier. Personnel and finance, also, we, we uh juggle those dates around a little next week because we do want to get together as soon as possible with Robert W. Baird, our financial advisors about twenty-twenty-four capital projects borrowing, but darned if I didn't light on the same night as the chambers annual awards program. Apologize for that, but uh, that meeting will not be on Thursday, subject to Baird's confirmation. Uh, we're probably looking at a week out on February fifteen. So um, that, that one has changed, it'll be posted and and communicated timely. Uh, plan commission does meet next Monday, February twelfth. A couple items on the agenda at least would be consideration of Tanaska's conditional use permit application and some of the details related to that ordinance on sidewalk signage. The good thing is, it's been a long meeting, but we have no closed session tonight.
Oh, darn.
I know, I know that would hurt your feelings.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Darla. Council discussion, see none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, motion carries and.